No, they're reaching.
Nope, I want what I wanted to say.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our Monday, August 7th meeting. I'd like to go ahead and officially call our meeting to order. Please join me. Marissa Bowers will give us the invocation and the pledge.
May our teamwork, our partnerships, and our collaborations remain grounded in love and respect. Help us to recognize that the diversity and unique gifts of people throughout the city complement and enrich each other. We pray that through collaborating, we will experience greater wholeness for ourselves and for those that we serve. May the work we do together be blessed so that an abundant and abundant harvest of love, justice, and peace will be known by all. Amen.
All right, thank you. Pam, can you please call our roll?
Ms. Angelou?
Here.
Bowers?
Here.
McGregor?
Here.
Padova?
Here.
Renner?
Here.
Schnitzer?
Here.
Weaver is absent.
All right, thank you. Item B additions or corrections to our agenda. Do we have anything tonight? All right, seeing none. Item C, hearing of visitors. We do have a resolution. Councilwoman Bowers, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Renner. We discussed at committee last week a resolution designating August 2023 as Safe Driving and Share the Road Awareness Month in the city of Gehanna. Thank you to our council clerk, Jeremy Van Meter, along with Chief Spence, Patricia Kovacs of the Bicycle Transit Advisory Committee, and others for collaborating on this resolution. I won't read it in whole, but it will be posted, and it is posted through our links on our website. And we will also have a copy here in council office. And we'd like to recognize Patricia Kovacs with this resolution tonight. Council members want to join for a photo?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the council and Ms. Bowers on behalf of the Bike Committee. And I also want to thank everyone else in city staff who's made our city so much more bikeable and walkable, including Stephanie Allen and Zach in Parks and Rec, Tom and Paige in Engineering, and everybody that came before them, Tony, Troy, Jeff in Parks and Rec, and Carl and Mike and Rob in Engineering. The other thing I want to mention, I heard Angelou, Ms. Angelou was questioning the data. I'm kind of a data geek, so I went back and looked at crashes in Gehanna. And in the last 10 years, we'd have, we'd usually have an average of about 4.8, exactly, 4.8 bike crashes and 4.5 ped crashes. So last year, we only had zero bike crashes and two ped crashes. So I think maybe the Share the Road resolutions and social media is making our roads safer. So I'm kind of optimistic about that. And then finally, just one more thing, we are seeing distracted driving since COVID, the speeding and the red light running. So I'm just encouraging everybody to watch the road. Don't look at your phone. Don't hold up to your ear. Don't use it at a red light, even though representative sites think that's safe because it's not. Keep it down, keep your phone down, and hands free. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I do have two speaker forms. Per our rules, when I announce your name, please come forward, announce your name and address for the record. Ms. Sharon Montgomery.
Sharon Montgomery, 572 Bondington Way in Gehanna. No big speeches this time. I just wanted to compliment you. Thank you for including distracted driving specifically in Resolution 27. And there were a number of things in there I liked, especially where you mentioned that after the, now therefore be it, that encouraged parents to be good role models. And also that the part about, where did I lose it? The part about the prevalence of electronic devices and the temptations to use them, that is really the crux of the matter. I tried to warn state legislators of this two decades ago, that if, you know, that people were just going to, there were going to be more and more people having phones, and the phones were going to do more and more tempting things. And if legislators had not ignored my warning then, we wouldn't be in the mess we're in now. But here we are, so I'm really pleased that Gehanna at least understands this dual part of this problem. I would also like to thank Chief Spence publicly for being so prompt and getting out the new fact sheet about the new distracted driving law. And I have another commitment tonight, so I can't stay to hear the public hearing about the capital improvements plan. But I want to compliment the clerk, Mr. Van Meter, on his wonderful minutes. They're as good as being here, so I won't miss anything, even though I can't stay. So thank you for all these good things.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Christian Peck.
Hello, my name is Christian Peck. I live at 122 Oklahoma Avenue. Tonight, I am speaking as the Board President for the Gehanna Area Arts Council, whose office is located at 81 Mill Street, Suite 300. I am here because we would like to thank the city of Gehanna. Over the weekend, the Arts Council hosted a community performance by the Columbus Symphony Orchestra at Headley Park. But we didn't just host the symphony. We also hosted three local food trucks, one hometown brewery, Hart State, and the more than 870 community members that attended the event. The weather was perfect. It was overcast, which kept the temperatures cool, but the rain held off. And about halfway through the performance, a rainbow even formed over the crowd. 870 is almost double the attendance we were able to draw at a similar event last year. It's also nearly four times the attendance the CSO is seeing in other communities as they perform these community events. So, as I often found myself saying on Saturday night, how great was it for the people of Gehanna to get to experience the symphony like this? But also, how great was it for the Columbus Symphony to get to experience the city of Gehanna like this? The city of Gehanna as we know it. This event would not have been possible without the hard work and support we receive from the city. We want to thank the entire Parks Department, but especially Steph, Brian, Zach, Chelsea, Sam, and Mitch for helping us to plan the event and set up the park. We also want to thank the city's Public Information Officer, Dan Pearlman, as well as Lori Kappas and her staff at Visit Gehanna for helping us to promote the concert. We'd like to thank Councilwoman Bowers for being one of the many generous community members who made a personal donation to help sponsor this event. And we'd like to thank Mayor Jadwin and her family for purchasing tickets and attending. On behalf of the G A A C, the Board of Directors, our volunteers, and the entire arts community, thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any more speaker slips. Pam, do we have any?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, item D, public hearings. We do have two items under public hearing. What I'm going to do is I'm going to treat it as one giant public hearing. I'm going to open proceedings and then, but treat them as separate. I'm going to focus on the Parks Master Plan first. And then, within the same public hearing, I'll turn around and ask for proponents and opponents under the capital improvement plan. Before I read the rules of our procedure, I'd like to ask if the administration has any comments they wish to make on, before we open proceedings.
I don't believe we do, but reserve the right to comment if needed.
Totally fine. Okay, all right, so per our, I'm going to be reading a snippet from our council rules of procedure 9.10 and 9.11. The public hearing shall be opened with proponents being allowed seven minutes, opponents 10 minutes, and then three minutes for a rebuttal by the proponents. Such time schedule shall prevail unless extended by the president without opposition by a council member. Everyone addressing council will approach the lectern and state their name and address for the record. All right, our public hearing is now officially open. And like I mentioned, I'm going to now focus on the Parks Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan first. So I'm now calling for proponents for the Parks Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. So don't run everybody once to the lectern. Second call for proponents. Okay, now calling for opponents of the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. Okay, going back to proponents. Are there any proponents that said, well, maybe I want to speak now? Okay, so thus concludes any discussion tonight on the hearing on the Parks Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. Item two in our public hearing tonight is our 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Plan. I'm now officially calling for proponents to speak on our capital improvement plan. Okay, now looking for opponents. You guys just like everything we do, right? Okay, now calling officially for, back to proponents of our 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Plan. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we close the public meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we close the public meeting on either of these items, I did want to ask if any video comments had been submitted through the portal on the council website.
Oh.
I know Clerk Van Meter is not here, but I wanted to make sure that we verified that.
Yes, no, we have not received any.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that question, really. Okay, public hearing is now officially closed. Thank you, everybody. All right, item E, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as published?
So moved, Mr. President.
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Angelou. Any discussion? Okay, Pam, please call our roll.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda is passed. Item F, ordinances for introduction and first reading. I'm going to only, there is no action tonight on either of these. But I'll read them into record. They are the two items that we had a public hearing. Ordinance 59, 2023, an ordinance adopting the City of Gehanna Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. And second is the ordinance 60, 2023, an ordinance adopting the City of Gehanna 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Plan. Thank you. Item G, ordinances for second reading and adoption. We have one. It's the ordinance 42, 2023, an ordinance to repeal the City of Gehanna Code Part 13, Building Code Chapter 131, registration removing requirements of certain contractors to register with the city. We did postpone this from our June 5th meeting to tonight. And so now, per our rules, 1114, I'm going to ask for a motion to bring it back to our agenda from postponement.
So moved, Mr. President.
I have a first by Ms. Powers. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Padova. Okay, any discussion on the motion to bring it back from postponement? Okay, so none. Pam, please call our roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, I do have a motion to adopt said ordinance.
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Padova. Any discussion?
Mr. Renner?
Ms. Bowers, please.
Yes, thank you. Based on my recollection of this item and a review of the minutes from June 5th, there had been a request for additional information and possibly some additional administrative processes that might have accompanied this. To date, I don't believe that those have been provided. And I just wanted to recap that, so that's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Pam, please call the roll on this ordinance 42, 2023.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Angelou?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
McGregor?
Yes.
Renner?
No. All right, item, the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item H, ordinances for introduction, waiver, and adoption. We have two. Ordinance 58, 2023, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriations in the transfer funds, waiving second reading general fund, transfer, and developer disney road contract services. Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
So moved.
I have a first by Ms. Angelou. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schnitzer. Any discussion? Pam, please call our roll.
Angelou?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes. Okay, ordinance 58 passes. Ordinance 61, 2023, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an office and industrial incentive agreement with Orthopedic One, Inc., for a five-year period of years, waiving second reading. I do have a motion to adopt said reading, said ordinance.
So moved.
I have a first by Ms. Bowers. Do I have a second? A second by Mr. Schnitzer. We have guests from Orthopedic One. I'd like to, actually, before we have council comment or any, maybe they have questions, I'd like to ask you officially if you want to do any presentation or speak on this ordinance.
I don't think we have anything formal to say, more than we did last week. But we are very excited about the opportunity to move to Gehanna and think it's a really good fit for our practice and a really good fit for the citizens of Gehanna. So we're hoping that the council sees it that way as well. So thank you for allowing us to be here.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation too last week, and we're excited, at least I am. All right, any other comments?
It says, I lost my page. It said five year, but I thought we, was it 10 years in my?
This is for the O and I incentive, the office industry incentive, so it's for a five-year period.
Okay, all right. I just, I just remembered there being longer for something. Okay, thanks.
Well, it's great to clarify. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Pam, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Angelou?
Big yes.
Big yes. All right, ordinance passes. Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I, correspondence and actions. Madam Assistant Clerk, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council colleagues, do you have anything for the good of the order? Okay, we're moving along. Item J, Representatives, CIC, Community Improvement Corporation. I don't have anything to add, except we do have a meeting next week on Tuesday, August 15th, at 8:00 a.m. in the committee rooms. All right, item two, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, MORPC, Ms. Angelou?
Thank you very much, sir. I have a few things because we actually didn't have anything in July. But in August, this past week, we had a meeting. And of course, the, actually, where we're going to be doing all of the things here are this Thursday. And I will be there. I wanted to point out a few things. Number one, we have three different, looking, finding proposals here. Regional Data Advisory Committee did one, adoption of MORPC's 2023 to 2025 Regional Data Agenda. That is on our information for this Thursday. A Resolution 1023, authorizing the executive director to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Central Ohio Transit Authority for Transit Supportive Infrastructure. And a third one, which is authorizing the executive director to enter into agreements with the Ohio Department of Development for the July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2027 Home Weatherization Assistance Program. Those will be there on this Thursday. Eric Janis, who is the Chair of MORPC, is leaving. He received a chance to go back to his Cleveland, my hometown, and Cuyahoga County. And he has taken that Chief of Staff for that. So he will be leaving, I think, within a week. So this is going to be an interesting thing for us to do here at MORPC because he is the Chair at this point and would have gone through to next year at the 2024. So that is being looked at at this point. We have also the Summit on Sustainability called INSPIRE. And it's going to be Thursday, October 26th, and we can start registering now. Typically, we have put a table together. And so how many people would like to be able to do this on October 26th? It's a wonderful opportunity to do sustainability things. And I believe our mayor has a little bit to do with this as well at MORPC. So I think it would be wonderful for us to be there for her as well. So we would probably try to see if we can get that passed through. Another thing that, I was actually going to bring this for Jeremy, but Strategic Framework 2023-24, that's also something that we're doing. And it's an amazing thing here. It's got all of the parts of this, and I'm going to bring, try to bring about seven of them home when I'm there on Thursday. It's a really strategic framework, and it's so well done. And I think that Neil Jurist has a lot to do with this as well. So one of our wonderful people from Gehanna. With that, that's all I wanted to do today, to just to make sure that we had all that. And we wish Mr. Janis all the best because he's a very wonderful person who has done a wonderful job. So with that, I would say goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Ms. Padova.
Thank you. The Visit Gehanna staff has started planning for the Holiday Light Celebration, taking place on Sunday, November 19th. That is the Sunday right before Thanksgiving. Sponsors are currently being sought, and vendor applications will be available soon on the Visit Gehanna website. So mark your calendar for this community event. We went last year, and it was great. There were tons of people there. It was freezing cold, but there were still tons of people there, and it was a lot of fun. Lots of fun things to do for the kids. And also, the CVB welcomed a new staff member today, Jared White. He is the new marketing and communications manager, and he is also a Gehanna Lincoln High School graduate. So. and communications manager, and he is also a Gehanna Lincoln High School graduate, so welcome to the team, Jared, that's all for me.
Thank you. School Board, Ms. Powers?
Thank you. I'll start with some great news, congratulations to Lincoln Live students, they were awarded 10 Regional Student Emmys from the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, Ohio Valley Chapter, including Best Newscast and Best Sports Program. As many of you might know, Gehanna Jefferson Schools, their first day back to school is next Thursday, so as we think about sharing the road, please make sure that we're being mindful about students returning to school as well. The next quarterly city-school district meeting will be held this Thursday, August the 10th, and an agenda has not yet been circulated but is anticipated. And finally, the joint presentation that I had previously discussed has been indefinitely postponed, but hopefully we'll be able to readdress that at a future date. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask, what was the postponement on that?
We received an email from the superintendent indicating that they were, had requested to postpone that.
Okay, I just wanted.
Thank you. Item K, official reports, Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much, and I know they are representatives from OrthoOne have left already, but I would like to again thank the CEO, Mark Delosio, who was here last week, Dr. Feibel, who was here this evening, along with Brooke Burns, and the OrthoOne team, and thank you, council, for your vote this evening. Your vote will allow us to really position the next steps of this very significant project for Gehanna. And for those who maybe weren't here last week, this is a project that would involve OrthoOne building a brand-new facility at the Crescent and Central Park, a $20 million building, 215 jobs to start with, with a starting annual payroll of $28 million. So significant impact to our community, great impact for our schools with $5.6 million in the first 10 years that they'll be here, and this is just a phenomenal project, I'm going to use Director Hammond's words, where he said in his almost 30 years of experience, he's not seen a project of this magnitude, so yay for Gehanna for tonight, and yay for OrthoOne, we look forward to working with them. Similarly, or last week, we celebrated another business that's growing in Gehanna. You might remember around this time last year, council approved a similar O&amp;I agreement for Ultimate Solutions. Ultimate Solutions is a global company, they're a leader in the life science industry, they were, have, they're based in Puerto Rico, they have an office in Madrid, and they could have chosen anywhere in the country for their next location, and they chose Gehanna, in part because they are a supplier of Amgen, they wanted to be near Amgen, but they could have chosen New Albany, but they chose Gehanna, and I still maintain it was dinner at Creekside and Barrel and Boar that pushed us over the top on that, but they celebrated their official grand opening last week, they had promised 30 jobs as part of that O&amp;I incentive, and they are almost nearly there already, just with their first official opening, so we look forward to working with them. Thanks to the many residents who attended National Night Out last Tuesday, I know many of our council members were there as well at Sunpoint Park, also a big thank you to Pastor Dave Jansen and the CenterPoint Church folks for providing hot dogs and snacks, I know how much our officers enjoy, they look forward to that event, they're looking forward to engaging with the community, and there will be another opportunity this Thursday, which is August 10, when they, we will host Coffee with a Cop at Starbucks up by Raising Canes, up at Morrison-Hamilton Road. There will also be some police and fire vehicles there, that event runs from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. 104.9 The River is providing music for that event as well, so yet another great opportunity for the community to come out, engage with our law enforcement folks, and really just get to know who they are. Our officers really look forward to engaging with the community and the members that they serve, and it's just a fantastic time for the kiddos to get to have a conversation with police officers as well. Appreciated Mr. Peck's comments on the symphony, it was an exciting weekend, both personally and in the City of Gehanna. On a personal note, it was a weekend of milestone celebrations for my family, my mom celebrated her 85th birthday this weekend, and I was very blessed to get to be able to spend even just a night with her to celebrate her birthday with some of the members of our family. We also celebrated our daughter and son-in-law's sixth wedding anniversary on the same day, got back in time for the Vets, Rods &amp; Classics car show, which was well-attended, it was a beautiful event, some fantastic cars down there, I think they outdid themselves this year, and then followed by the symphony that evening, and as Mr. Peck said, it was a beautiful evening, that we had no rain, but yet we had a rainbow, and it was nearly 1,000 residents who were on hand for that event, and congratulate the Gehanna Area Arts Council for their work in bringing that event to Gehanna. And then on Sunday, Chief Spence and I had the privilege of presenting a citizen commendation to a Gehanna resident, Albert Kechel. This might be an incident that you may not be familiar with, but Mr. Kechel had some very brave and selfless actions earlier this year. Back in February, he was at a store, and he observed shoplifting going on in progress at Giant Eagle, he observed the suspects assaulting a store clerk, and as they were trying to leave the store, they assaulted him as well, undeterred and without any regard to his personal safety, he went after them, and he, to try to get information, he was able to contact 911, he got the license plate, the vehicle description, they assaulted him again in the parking lot, and he was undaunted in what he did, and because of his efforts, our officers were able to locate the suspects, track them down, arrest them, and they were charged with robbery and assault, and we did tell him, he gets a one-time pass, he's not allowed to do that again, but he's 80 years old, and God love him, for his actions, he was quite the brave citizen, and it was just a privilege and an honor to be able to present that commendation to him. Just a couple reminders, as we near school starting, the pools are going to be closing, Gehanna Swimming Pool closes the 16th. The splash pad, however, will be open to the public daily from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. through Saturday, September 20. Hunter's Ridge Pool will be open daily through August 16, and then open on weekends, Saturday and Sunday, through September, September 4, can't read my writing, from 12:00 to 7:00 p.m. So for updates on that, if you get confused, just take a look at our social media pages as well as the website. And also wanted to just touch on the fact that, again, as Councilwoman Bowers mentioned, school begins next week. For drivers who drive in any of the school zones, we have 13 school zones around this city, there are 16 crosswalks just in the vicinity of Gehanna Lincoln High School, 16 just in the vicinity here. There are kids walking to school, cars, please pay attention, when the cross, when you're nearing a crosswalk, please stop, please wait for the students to cross all the way before proceeding through the crosswalk, and students, your cellphones are lovely things, but put them in your pocket when you're crossing the street, and do not be texting and walking at the same time. I think Ms. Montgomery, who I know had to leave, would be talking about distracted walking as well as distracted driving, neither a good combination, so just heads up to everybody, I know our officers will be out and about next week when the kids return, but it's an exciting time of year, and we'll be counting down the days for the stadium to open for the first football game, tentatively September 1. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, President Renner, I'm just looking forward to a quick adjournment.
Sorry, Greg.
All right, thank you. All right, council, item L, council comment, Ms. Angelou?
I had the honor to be around here last Wednesday when Todd Huffman, from our wonderful, wonderful police, retired. It was a wonderful little, it's just such a great thing to watch, as he's, you know, they bring the American flag out, and it was just wonderful, and he was a wonderful policeman as well, so that was, I found it really good. Yesterday was my anniversary, I, my husband and I have been married for 57 years, figure that one out. Anyway, it, you know, it is, it was, it's such a wonderful thing to be able to have that, 57 years, I'm, we'd like to have about three or four, at least more, as we grow old here, but it was just a wonderful, we've had a wonderful day, and it was very nice to be able to say, gee, I can't imagine that we could ever be married this long, because it's just 57 years, that's a lot. So with that, I will move on.
Thank you. Mrs. McGregor?
Happy anniversary, Karen, thanks. They had, this Saturday, we have, Gehanna Historical Society has their Founder's Day Celebration, it's from 11:00 to 2:00 at the historic area on South High Street, and if you, if you can't come to that, you should drive by and look at our Lily Stone Bend Breakfast, we are painting, the south side is pretty much completed, they're working on the west side, and we have worked long and hard, scrimped and saved, to have money to paint this house, so it's, it's been looking rough for a while, when they, they did the priming, they scraped it, and then they primed, and almost the whole house was primed, because there was so much paint, they scraped off of it, so it's gonna, it's gonna look really well, we, we like the colors, they gave us, the gal who picks our colors gave us two choices of palettes, both green, but the one was named Rosemary, the green was Rosemary, we thought the herb capital of Ohio, it just seemed, everybody just seemed to pick that color, so we hope you all like it, so we have, we have music, we have bands on Saturday, the Goldsberries, and then a group called Flat Bottoms, and then we have different kinds of treats, I know Dairy Queen is sending some ice cream that will be, they'll be available to purchase, and just a nice day to sit out and listen to some music and visit the historic homes, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powers?
Yes, thank you, congratulations and happy anniversary to you and Dick, and we're looking forward to the Founder's Day event, I know we had lots of fun at Pioneer Day last month, so we're looking forward to it this weekend. Thank you to BTAC, everyone who serves on that committee, and frankly, for that matter, everyone who serves on all committees in the city, but specifically thanks to Patricia Kovacs, as well as to Sharon Montgomery tonight, for your tireless advocacy for safer roads. Bike and pedestrian infrastructure is a priority of mine for resource allocation, and I hope that we continue to move in that direction, and thank you for your kind words tonight, Ms. Kovacs. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Gehanna 175 Planning Meeting, next year, Gehanna will be celebrating the 175th anniversary, and I appreciate the city pulling together committee. Another, I guess, preliminary planning meeting will be scheduled, and hope to have lots of community partners around the table, so I'm very much looking forward to that, and all the activities and excitement that we will have around that next year. A great time at National Night Out last week as well, thank you to the Gehanna Division of Police and Chief Spence for helping to organize that, along with other members from the city. And also, I wanted to mention that Sunny 95 hosts community block parties, and people can go on to their website and nominate neighborhoods, suburbs, and parks to receive these free block parties. Rathburn Woods was lucky enough to have one again this year, thank you to the Parks Department for being a great, being great collaborators with that, I saw lots of park staff helping to set things up for that, so it was a really great opportunity, and the neighbors loved it, it was incredibly well-attended. I also wanted, Mayor, you mentioned something about Ultimate Solutions, and congratulations to Ultimate Solutions, I had the privilege to stop by House of Hands, a new business that had its grand opening over the weekend, congratulations to Melinda and the staff at House of Hands for their opening, it's an aesthetic, medical aesthetic spa, right on North Hamilton Road, so congratulations to them and all the new business that we're seeing sprout up. I didn't, you know, it was interesting, I believe this was only the second O&amp;I incentive that I remember voting on, interestingly, the CAPS project last year, and then this project, but I think that Ultimate Solutions ended up withdrawing their request for an O&amp;I incentive due to some other arrangements that were in place, but congratulations to Ultimate Solutions on their expansion, and again, we're looking forward to Orthopedic One's presence and expansion here in Gehanna, too, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padova.
Thank you. I wanted to let everybody know that the Gehanna Chamber will be hosting the Taste of Gehanna Event, taking place on Sunday, August 27, from 5:00 to 8:00, Edison Brewing. Tickets are available for purchase at the Chamber's website, gehannachamber.org, I went to that last year, and it was a really nice event, and Edison Brewing Company is just beautiful at sunset, can't say enough good things about that view. And also, as Councilwoman Bowers mentioned, the Sunny 95 block party at Rathburn Woods last week, I was able to attend that, and it was such a great event that brought the neighbors together to enjoy just a really beautiful summer night, there were a lot of people there, and lots of smiles on people's faces. This weekend is the Grin Back to School Fair, so they will also be operating their pantry normal hours in the morning, and are currently quite short-staffed for that, as many of their normal volunteers are going to be at the Back to School Fair setting up, so if you are free in the morning and would like to volunteer, I would encourage you to go to Grin for Gehanna to view their signup genius and grab a volunteer slot, it's always, Saturday mornings was one of my favorite times to work at the pantry, you never know what you're going to get, but you're always going to be there with a good group of volunteers. And then tomorrow is my little girl's second birthday, she is likely in bed at this point, but if she's still tuned in, happy birthday, Geneva. This morning, we asked her what tomorrow is, and instead of saying her birthday, as we would have expected, she said Vote No Day. So as I teach my daughter to use her voice, I encourage all of you to use yours tomorrow, and go vote.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Snitzer?
Nothing to add, Mr. President, thank you.
All right, thank you. It's down to me, my final comments are, first off, congratulations to Officer Huffman, it's really, it's always a wonderful thing to see a new officer come, and it's always a wonderful thing to recognize and award an officer for retirement, for their duty to the citizens, and so thank you for all his service. Ms. Angelou, about a week ago, Melissa and I celebrated our 30th anniversary, and so I asked her, I was teasing her around, saying, you know, are we going to go for another 30? And she was like, yeah, why not, so we'll catch up and be up there with you and Dick, so. I don't have anything else, and thank you, and have every, everybody have a wonderful evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
Sure.[1752.11]